Is Dan Miller here? He's not here. We're gonna call this meeting to order. Will you first please join in and salute our nation's flag?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, like our God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Carol, roll call, please. I mean, roll call.
Supervisor Agizio.
Here.
Supervisor Barney.
Here.
Supervisor Fisher. Supervisor Shafoni.
Here.
Supervisor Cassiola.
Here. In addition, Township Manager Dawn Januso, Assistant Township Manager and Planning Director Jack King, Chief of Police Sean Bukowinski, Director of Public Works Bill Bodroff. He's not here. Innen Fire Chief Ted Wolford, our Township Engineer Dan Dazeroth, and Solicitor Gretchen Moore. At this time, we do look for comments from residents on something you see on the agenda. If someone has an agenda item they'd like to discuss or question, could you please come up to our microphone? If there's more than one, you can make a queue. That helps move things along.
It's Mike. Is it Mike?
Yes.
My name's Jackie Gazvota. 3770 Millers Run Road, Route 50. That's the Village of Venice. And it's Gazvota with an S. I'm here to talk about the flood that happened on April 11th. Unless you live there, you don't understand. And I can honestly say I didn't see anybody in my neighborhood checking it out. And I wish you would've. I shouldn't have to reach out, but I'm doing the best I can to contact my neighbors and tell them what I see. So, prior to that flood, which was a major flood, there was a minor flood about a week before that. I don't know if you recall that, but the creek came up over the bed. I'd called 911. Police had to come. They shut down the road. Even though they're shutting down the road, people were going around the cones and the barricades. And it's a tragedy waiting to happen. Okay, this last flood, my neighbors, all of my neighbors, we all had to go out, move all our cars up to the trail before the flood came. And we were trying to stop cars from going through there. I had called 911. It took about 20 minutes or so. Police came. By the time they got out there, a lady was trapped. I don't want to see it come to the point where somebody drowns before we do something. So, what I'm thinking is, you know, in Washington Avenue in Pittsburgh, they have that emergency gate. When that lady drowned, all of a sudden, we have an emergency gate that comes down with lights and some kind of signal. It shuts the road down. Do you guys recall? Do you know what I'm talking about?
Yeah.
Okay. So, I don't know if we need that there or what we need, but people will not stop driving through the flooded waters. And somebody's gonna drown. On another note, I did call, I did contact all the senators, all the representatives. The only person who got back to me was Senator Casey's office. And when I talked to them, they said to reach out to local government, which is you, the Washington Conservation District, who I visited on Tuesday, and our emergency management, which is Ed Poverk. So, I'm trying to go through the proper channels. And she said that even though we lost a lot, and I did, I mean, I, my, mine was nothing compared to my neighbors'. And my, my total insurance was over $13,000. Just for me. Theirs is double that. They lost everything. The thing concerns me is that flooding, there's a flooding between my home, which is the greenhouse on the corner, and the house going towards Cecil. There's a field. And that water used to flow up over 50 and down through the gully. Well, now the road's higher, the ground has sunk, and the water's pooling back into those homes. And they're, that's the third time my neighbor was flooded. They've lost everything three times. I know we live in Venice. You know, there's a lot of water. But there's gotta, the streams need clean. There are tree trunks in that stream that are 10 feet in diameter. There's big pieces of concrete cement. I don't know where they're coming from. Big rocks. It's big. Big beds of rocks. My neighbor used to cut behind his trees along the bank. Now the trees are in the bank because the dirt's gone. So, we need a collaborative effort between local, county, and state. That's what the senator's office said. There's nothing they can do. There's nothing you can do. But together, we need to do something. And the people at the conservation said, which was weird, but the homeowner's responsible for cleaning the stream. But we're not allowed to touch the stream. Doesn't bother me because mine doesn't touch the stream, but I know my 80-year-old neighbor cannot go down and clean out the stream. 20 years ago, when we got flooded, Ivan, I called Vic Leskovitz's office, and in two days, they dredged that stream, and they got rid of all that debris. And if you come to my home and look on the hill, it's still up there from 20 years ago. But it's collected now. And I went up to Southview Road, and I came all the way down past Mr. Byton's, where they put the new bridge in next to that garage. And it is just full of debris that needs cleaned. I know the conservation guy also said, "We need the DEP and the Army Corps of Engineers to help you get that done." So, that's, that's what we need to do.
Can I ask a question? Did you reach out to Senator Bartolotta and State-
No response.
And State Rep. Jason Ortiz?
No response. The only response, and Fetterman, all of them. The only one I got was Casey. I filled out the form online. I submitted it. No response. So, I mean, I've been doing what I can and cleaning at the same time. So, but yes.
We have a good relationship with State Rep. Jason Ortiz's office, so we can make a call to him tomorrow to find out why.
They might, it might have crossed. I don't know.
It's fine, but we can get you. Just make sure before you leave tonight, you give us your direct email and phone number so that we can get back to you.
Ed Poverk has it, because he also sent a letter to the county asking for help with this. Because it's gonna take everybody. There's not one person, one entity. It's gonna take everybody to do something. But, um-
My concern, though, is those, that's the intersection of two state roads, 980 and 50. So, there's, we are limited on what we can do on state roads, but he's not. Yeah, right. They're not. Right. So-
Yeah, but we have to stop passing the buck and do something before somebody drowns. And I don't know about Lawrence, but I know there's floods too. I know they're putting in sewage, sewage and stuff there. I don't know if that's gonna make a difference. Same as I snuck, it might make a little difference for a while if it's cleaned out. But I know they don't want us messing up the stream because they have fish in there. Well, I had to get a tetanus shot because of the sewage water I was walking in. And those fish are in the sewage water all the way down. So, because, you know, the sewage stops at the school. Those fish are just swimming in the sewage water. And I don't know what they're worried about the fish for.
All right, Jackie, we understand the situation. I think, as Cindy says, we can talk to our reps to see if they want to do a collaborative effort. I know Oakdale did that after either Ivan or what's the other one? And they got, stayed involved. So, I mean, that's the most we can tell you we can do right now. But we've got a business meeting that we've got to-
No, I know. And this is business. This is important, and you need to know. And hey, come up there and check it out. Any of you, anytime. Come up and look, and you'll see what we're talking about. So, thanks.
Is there anybody else on the, on the agenda items? Or we're just gonna move on to our announcements? Our Parks and Rec Board will meet, or have their sponsor, their 13th Annual Touch a Truck Event. It's really a lot of fun for the kids. On Saturday, May 11th, from 11:00 a.m. to 2:00 p.m. Our Historic Society will hold a meeting on Wednesday, May 15th, at 7:00 p.m. in a meeting room here. The Society Vice President Mason Secrety will present sports figures from Cecil Township. Also, on June 19th, President Jim Zemiskin, member Kathy Pigford, will present the Cecil Township Jail. So, they want you to join them here if you can. Jordan Tax Services will be at the Municipal Building for taxes for 2024. On Thursday, May 23rd, from 1:00 to 4:00 p.m. Tuesday, May 28th, from 9:00 a.m. to noon. And Friday, May 31st, from 9:00 a.m. to noon. Also, our municipal offices will be closed on May 27th in observance of Memorial Day. Our Family Bingo for the Cecil Volunteer Fire Company Number Three. The doors open at 11:00 a.m. Bingo begins at noon, and you can read the rest of that. Cash only, they're saying. It's sponsored by the Ladies Auxiliary. Staff, Dawn.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. You may or may not have noticed, the new LED message sign has been installed in front of the building. Training on its operation program will commence in the coming weeks, so that's why you won't see any message. But the clarity of the sign is so much better than the last. Not unlike Ms. Gazvota, the flooding event of April 11th resulted in 16 to 20 inches of water in the existing Public Works Building and Outbuildings, leaving behind debris and a thick coating of muddy residue throughout the building. Carpeting desks, all of the garage doors, and an extensive list of tools and shop equipment sustained damage and/or loss. Bill and I will continue to work with our adjusters regarding those claims for damages. Once we have a final report, I will forward that to the board for their review. That's all I have.
All right. Thank you, Dawn. Sean, Police Chief, report?
Good evening, everybody. The Police Department participated in the DEA National Drug Takeback Program. That was on April 27th. It was a success. And I just want to remind the public and the board that we have a drop drug box in our lobby. We do accept pills and patches, no liquids or needles. We also typically have it at the Dollar General. They're really nice to let us have it there. And again, we, we actually got a lot of turn-in for prescription drugs. So, it was wonderful.
Thank you, Sean.
Yep.
Bill, did Dawn steal your thunder?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. As Dawn previously mentioned, we're very busy with recovering from the flood of April 11th. We've had a lot of roadway shoulder, shoulder scar issues come up for the second time this season. We did, we completed lawn restoration over at Cecil Park here, put down the, tried to put as best back as we could, the coconut netting that the Corps of Engineers and DEP put in there when they did the stream restoration project. We're happy to, to report that it appears that the stream is very healthy because within a matter of days, the trout reappear into the deep holding areas over there. So, the restoration work is ongoing in Cecil Township. We're helping people when we have time, after we're trying, after we're done helping ourselves recover up here at the building. Right now, the building is, it's, it's got a bad odor to it. So, I'm gonna give this board a piece, a piece of advice. Once we vacate that, there's no good use for that building because it's gonna continue to happen. The drywall's wet in there right now, and it's just not worth the effort of ripping all that out. So, we continue with our work at the new Public Works Building. This week, we've installed some of the landscaping up there, the trees and stuff. And this coming Wednesday, we'll, we'll kick off with a, well, I have a annual construction progress building for the, for the contractors up there to get an update on where they're at as far as the completion is concerned. It looks like possibly mid-August, we might be in there. And then, of course, I have a couple kickoff meetings with the contractors. I have a pre-construction meeting with Morgan Excavating on Wednesday at 10:00, and then Mealy Construction on Friday at 10:00 to kick off the work over at South Point Boulevard. So, residents can expect a lot of work going on in Cecil Township this year. Thank you.
Thank you, Bill. Dan, do you have anything other than our normal reports?
Just to add on to what Bill said, that the Youngblood has already completed the remaining work that they had to do in Georgetown Estates, so that's gonna be on the agenda for a final payment. And then, the 2024 pavement maintenance program, the contracts have been executed, and we have a meeting with PennDOT Municipal Services to obtain their, we have met with PennDOT Municipal Services to get their approval for Contract A, and they'll be scheduling a pre-construction meeting. Other than that, I have other items on the agenda.
All right. Thank you, Dan. Gretchen?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. In addition to the report that I submitted, it was a fairly busy month working with zoning code enforcement, our engineer, and dealing with day-to-day legal with our township manager. Worked on a couple developers' agreements. We had some easement matters and spent a significant amount of time working on the oil and gas ordinance, having meetings and discussions related to that. And I also have, for an interesting piece of case law updates, the Supreme Court this past year, here in the Pennsylvania Supreme Court, this past year came down with an interesting decision. It's a short decision with a really long consent, but dissent. What it does, though, is for, before municipal boards, the hearings that you have before them, they've kind of expanded the concept of standing before the municipal boards. And what they've said is that the concept of standing before the municipal boards arguably is greater than what you need to achieve standing before the courts. And that's different than all of us have typically proceeded. Typically, we proceed as, you know, there's a, you have to prove standing here, and that standing then translates arguably to the court of common pleas when there's an appeal. So, it's an interesting decision. I haven't really seen the implications of it yet. I think there's going to be broad implications in terms of how people handle these hearings moving forward. So, we'll deal with that when we have our next hearing.
Could you send it to us to read?
Yes, yeah, I'll send it to you. It's, the case is South Bethlehem Associates versus zoning hearing board of Bethlehem Township.
Okay, I can just look it up.
Always gets tougher, huh?
Yep.
Ted?
Yeah, thank you. The fire department's been busy this month as well. We had a couple different trainings going on. I'm sure you've seen all the cars behind Cecil Fire Department. They're all destroyed. Our firefighters have been training on vehicle rescue for people trapped in vehicles. Another training we just finished up this weekend was live fire scenarios at the Washington County Fire Academy. Again, Touch a Truck is this Saturday, so come out and see some of the fire trucks we have. We did receive five bids for a new fire engine. They're still under review. We should have that on the agenda for June. Also, on tonight's agenda, you'll see that we're hiring five part-time firefighters. They were all tested and interviewed, and they meet the qualifications that we require. That's all I have.
All right. Thank you, Ted. I guess Dan's not here today for the south bridge. Okay. Discussion items, Dan?
Sure. Bill gave a pretty good report related to-
Dan, get close to the microphone, please.
Bill gave the report on the Public Works Building, but just very quickly, I'll just throw the plan up here so everybody can visualize what we're talking about. The West Penn Power is working on bringing power to the site, and we're working with our electrical contractor to see what we can do to facilitate that, to get the three-phase power up to the building as quickly as possible. You'll, they're pretty much complete, working on a punch list. That's our general contractor. Schultz is the electrical contractor, about 70% complete. The gas and plumbing are nearly almost complete at 98%. Fire Systems, again, about 95%. And the exterior duct work done by East West is, they're doing some of that work there at about 90%. So, the fuel tanks, that works at about 80%. And as Bill said, the building is pretty much on its way. The only, the only issue, the issue that we're having related to the building is getting the panel in for the electrical. That, that was ordered right after the notice to proceed, but it's one of those things that's still hanging out there. There's a huge backlog from COVID, so that's what's, even though the building is pretty much along its way, we'll still be waiting for that final piece of electrical equipment to get things opened up and running. So, there's a number of different contracts that are on the agenda tonight for payment that we're recommending. And then, would also say on the, on the other projects that you awarded last month, they've all been awarded. And as Bill described, there's some pre-construction meetings set up related to like the paving on, in the reconstruction of Klinger Road, the paving on the site, and other work related to the salt storage building. So, everything's still moving along and, and no issues other to report. That's it. If there's any questions.
Thank you, Dan. What about Lawrence now?
Sure. So, last month, just allow me to open up something there first. So, last month, the board authorized us to take a look at Lawrence from a, from a picture of what it needed in terms of storm sewers and paving. As everybody knows, the town is getting sanitary sewers right now. And just to give a little bit of update on that, the main lines are in. So, that's good. The plant is well underway, but like we were just discussing on the Public Works Facility, they're behind on some of the equipment that's being needed to complete the plant. They can't tie people in to, to the, to the plant. Till the plant's ready, residents can't really do their hookups to the main line. So, as we understand it, it's gonna probably take until like the spring of next year before they start making the actual connections to the tie-ins for the homes. And that's going to make more damage to the town. We'll know what things are gonna end up looking like at that point in time as, when you get a bunch of little contractors in there doing their work to connect the laterals. So, based upon that, it doesn't look like the, we would be in a position to recommend anything until at least late 2025. Would, would keep an eye on that. But just in terms of what's needed, the good thing is, I forgot to introduce Adam Gapparts here from my office. He was out to help me on this project. And what we found is, there's really, as like, I like to tell people, in an older town like, like Lawrence, you don't really want to upset the equilibrium. We're not gonna go out here and put in curbs and repave the roads and build storm sewers and stuff like that because it's really not warranted. And plus the fact that all the wildcat sewers that have been in place for years up there to carry away the sewage aren't going away. They're still there to carry away what other, other miscellaneous waters connected to them. So, we're just seeing that there's a, in the central part of the town, that there's a, a recommendation for some storm sewer in this particular area that's clouded between First and Second Street, really. So, that's, that's pretty much what we would recommend in terms of a storm sewer system. We also looked at the paving. It looks like they've done a real good job in the trenches, and it looks like we'll be able to get away with, if, if conditions don't change significantly. If things don't change significantly from the, the condition of the paving now, an inch and a half overlay will be sufficient up there to do, to actually cut the trenches and still be able to maintain drainage and everything else that needs to be done. So, I don't wanna, I don't wanna belabor this, but I think it's something the board could look at during budgeting process. But our, our estimate with the, with the paving and the storm sewers is gonna be in the, in the range of about $800,000 to do the work. So, just something to think about when it comes to budgeting time, whether it's for 2025 or 2026, or you want to space it out. So, that, that would be our recommendation.
Dan, I wanted to mention to the residents, when you talked about the storm sewers that, or the wildcat sewers that will still exist, they do work. Unfortunately, they're carrying raw sewage in addition to stormwater right now. But as Dan said, once all the residents tap into the actual sewer system, then it'd be stormwater running through the, even though they're wildcat sewers, I think they were wildcat sewers because of the raw sewage. Now, there won't be sewage. So, as he said, we're pretty happy to see that there's not a significant amount of new pipe work that needs to be done. I thought it'd be, you know, just extensive because of the lay of the land, but I'm glad to hear that, that, that it's almost minimal.
We observed it during rain events, and, you know, there didn't appear to be anything. We talked to Bill, of course. There's no major complaints in, in the village right now related to storm sewers. So, I think we're in good shape.
Good, good to hear. All right. You might as well stay up there, Dan. Our Resolution Number 130-2024 for the ordinance to consider vacating a portion of Karen Drive, a move in that we table that for a little bit further study on the implications.
I'll second that.
It's been moved and seconded. Those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
The motion carries. For 131-2024, it's consider the application for payment number 12 for the work completed on the Public Works Facility, the electrical project in the amount of $17,263.47 to SC Schultz Electric.
I'll make a motion.
It's been moved-
Second.
And seconded. Dan, that you were ready, right? All these, you're, you're ready for approval?
Yeah, we made a recommendation. I have our letter up on the screen here.
Okay. All right. It's been moved and seconded. Those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
The, Karen, I mean, Carol, the motion carries four to one. For Item 132-2024, consider application for payment number seven for the work completed, the Public Works Facility, for the fire protection project in amount of $33,480 to Alliance Fire Systems, Inc. Is there a motion?
I'll make a motion.
It's been moved-
Second.
And seconded. Those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
The motion carries four to one. For 133-2024, it's consider rejecting the one bid we received for the removal of the topsoil pile at the Public Works Site in amount of $1,550. And I think it best behooves us to rebid that topsoil. Is there a motion?
I'll second.
And seconded. Those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
The motion carries for rejecting the bid. For Item Number 134-2024, consider application for payment number three and the final for the work completed on our 2023 pavement maintenance project contract in amount of $184,249.3 to Youngblood Paving.
So moved.
Moved. And seconded. Those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
The motion carries. For 135-2024, consider application for payment number one for work completed for the 2024 pavement project contract C in amount of $69,017.83 to parking lot paving, painting.
Yeah, this is the line-stripping contract.
I'll make a motion.
It's been moved.
Second.
And seconded. Those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye. Aye.
The motion carries. For 136-2024, it's consider application number 2024-0001 for the Dunn Subdivision Plan Number One. Applicant Elmer Dunn on Burnside Road. Dan?
Yeah, this is a, this is a subdivision plan. So, the plan proposes to subdivide a portion, an 80-acre portion into Lot 1 of 10 acres and Lot 2 of approximately 70 acres. The plan as prepared was, was reviewed by our office. They've addressed all our technical comments. It's also been recommended for approval by the planning commission. So, it's a two-lot subdivision. This is the, the lot of 70 acres, and then there's a lot of 10 acres on this side right here. So, the 10-acre lots on the other side of Burnside Road, and the 70 acres remains on the other side. So, it's almost like an, it's almost like a natural subdivision anyhow.
All right. Is there a motion to approve this subdivision?
I'll make a motion.
It's been moved. And seconded. Those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
The motion carries. For 137-2024, consider application 2024-0008 for the Kosky Barnes Subdivision and Consolidation Plan. It's on the backside of 50 Cherry Way. And it was pretty interesting what's going on there. Dan, tell us about it.
Yeah, this is, so this is, this is actually a, a plant proposes to subdivide. It's, it's, it's location is Burnside and Cherry Alley. It's in the R2 District. It proposes a subdivision of Lot 1 with 67.5 acres into Lot 1R of 64.024 acres, and a lot, a second lot of 3.489 acres, which will then be consolidated with adjoining Lot 2-1 of 1.09 acres, and it becomes a total of 4.5 acres. So, that's a lot. But so, the better way to, better way to describe this is that this, this is the property that's owned by Barnes, this location. This Z-line represents, this line will go away. And then, this parcel of approximately, the new lot, when this line goes away, will be approximately 4.3 acres. So, that comes off of the Kosky piece that's along Burnside Road here, and he has Lot 1 remaining, which still is about 64 acres. So, this is property that Kosky has owned. I know he's, he's got interest up in the, in the Slate Dump property, but this is not a part of that. This is a parcel that he's already owned before. This lot line was actually laid out with a Montour Trail involved, because there'll be, eventually be a Montour Trail connection that will come down through here and, and connect over to the muse- because there'll be eventually be a Montour Trail connection that will come down through here and, and connect over to the Muse School.
That's the interesting part I was talking about.
I forgot about that.
I, I was ready for that. Yeah, that, that, they worked out an agreement that right now the, the Montour Trail will make an ex- uh, extension near the McConnell Trail plan. And it's going to come all the way through, uh, cross over our, uh, Burnside Road and come across all this property and reach the school, uh, park, uh, playground area. So that's, that's a good thing for a trail and trail people. So thank you, Dan. Um, is there, do we have a motion to approve that Koski Barnes subdivision?
I'll make that motion.
It's been moved and seconded, those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
The motion carries. For one thirty-eight dash twenty twenty-four, it's consider the reapproval of an application twenty twenty-one dash zero zero six for the Traditions of America Phase Six and Phase Seven subdivision plans. Um, go ahead, Dan.
So, uh, if you recall, if the board recalls, Phase Six and Phase Seven are the upper reaches of the Traditions of America plan. This is actually Phase Six in this location here. And the next plan I'll show you is Phase Seven. It goes up further up. But essentially these plans, these plans were already approved by the board. Uh, their time for recording has, has run out. And this would be the end of the plan, the addenda, end of the Traditions of America plan. There was a stub street here that was connected up to be able to, uh, connect into future properties if necessary through this redway network. So, uh, again, it's just a reapproval of Phases Six and Seven, which will allow them then to execute their developers agreements and, and post financial securities. And then the plan will be signed, uh, for recording and they can begin construction on this phase of the work.
That plan sure progressed quickly.
I was actually up there. It's crazy how big that is up there and how many people are up there.
Huge.
Yeah. I'll make, I'll make a motion.
It's been moved. Uh, I'll second that. Those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Okay, Carol, the motion passes. Um, for one thirty-nine dash twenty twenty-four, it's consider a disaster declaration for the flooding event of April eleventh. Um, Dan, uh, Dawn, are you handling that?
Yes, Mr. Chairman. Um, we received, uh, actually Ted and I both, uh, received notification from the Washington County Department of Public Safety that since Allegheny County, uh, declared a state of emergency, excuse me, a disaster declaration, um, that, uh, adjoining municipal, or adjoining counties could be eligible for, um, assistance, flood assistance under the SBA, which is a small business, uh, association. So, um, that being said, that is why there's a, uh, recommendation for us to, um, declare a disaster emergency for any of our residents that may need assistance under that program.
But to be clear, Washington County did not declare a state of emergency.
Yes, they did not.
And also to be clear, this is not a grant or, I don't want to say free money. This is a loan that you, that the residents would have to repay, correct?
That is correct.
Okay.
Is there a motion to approve this disaster declaration?
I'll make that motion.
It's been moved and seconded, those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 The motion carries. Uh, item number one forty dash twenty twenty-four, it's considering the hiring of Matt O'Truchell as a, um, part-time summer employee at an hourly rate of seventeen dollars per hour.
I'll make that motion.
Been moved. I'll second that. Those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
The motion carries. For one forty-one dash twenty twenty-four, consider the hiring of Andrew Alderson as a part-time summer employee at an hourly rate of seventeen dollars per hour.
I'll make that motion.
Been moved.
Second.
And seconded, those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
The motion carries. For one forty-two dash twenty twenty-four, um, it, it's, I'm going to list the, the part-time firefighters as recommended by our fire chief Ted, uh, Brandon S. Bailey, Robert L. Branigan, Justin T. Frederick, Timothy J. Sheen, Sheehan, and Dominic A. Chikatano. Is there a motion to approve the hiring?
So moved.
I'll second.
Moved and seconded, those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
The motion carries.
Do we have rates for them? Okay, got it. Thank you.
Uh, for, uh, item number one forty-three dash twenty twenty-four, um, it's consider supporting a Southbridge grant application.
I added, I asked for this to be added. Dan Miller's not here tonight, but he had, uh, Southbridge had applied for a grant through Guy Reschenthaler's office and needed a letter of support from the board. I wrote that letter of support, um, and sent it back to Dan. We just need the board to authorize that it be sent.
There are motions to approve the, the, supporting the, uh, Southbridge application.
I'll make that motion.
It's been moved and seconded, those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
The motion carries. Uh, for one forty-one dash twenty twenty-four, it's to consider the board's supervisors minutes of, from Monday, April first, twenty twenty-four, our regular scheduled meeting.
I'll make a motion.
It's been moved.
Second.
And seconded, those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
The motion carries. For one forty-five dash twenty twenty-four, it's consider the general fund invoices from April first through April thirtieth, twenty twenty-four. Is there a motion to approve the general fund invoices?
I'll make a motion.
Been moved. I'll second that. Those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 The motion carries. All right, it is time. If you have any comments that's unrelated to our agenda, please feel free to come up to, uh, give us some, any comments you wish. Does anybody wish us to make comments? Yes, please. So, just so everybody can hear.
We're talking, we're talking about the, uh...
Tom, what's his name? What's your name, please, sir?
I'm sorry. My name is Mark Leibai, three six nine seven Millers Run Road. Um, the question that I have is we're talking about the, uh, flood event. And, um, what determines? What, what's the catalyst to determine when it becomes a, uh, a na- or a FEMA event? Does that make sense? What, what's, what's the catalyst for that? Is there a...
We wouldn't even determine that. Go ahead, Dawn.
Safet. Dumpster. They were, uh, from county hauling, I believe. They were paid for by the state because of the damage. I, I know somebody who works at the municipal and they were bringing them in and out like crazy. Oakdale. Uh, down there by, um, the bank, McDonald. They were getting dumpsters in and out from county hauling that were allowing you to pretty much put anything that was affected by the flood. W- w- we did not have that. And the question is, what's the qualifying event to have that happen? Because, uh, my neighbor actually has... Sorry. My neighbor actually has stuff that he put out to the curb. The garbage men didn't take it, so there it sits.
Is it bagged?
It's a mattress. How do you bag a mattress?
They should have, well, they'll take it the first. So to be fair, I have had numerous conversations, as did our ma- manager Don Genuso with State Rep Jason Ortiz. The amount of flooding that they had in Oakdale, I, I'm not saying, I don't want to minimize the amount of flooding we had here because we did have flooding and there were people that had damage. But it wasn't to the extent that it was in Cuddy or in Oakdale. Like, they literally had, you know, five or six feet of water in plazas, banks ruined, things like that.
The banks still not open down there.
It actually just opened today. Yeah, so that's funny. Yeah, because that's actually where I do banking. Right, that's where I do banking. Um, we had numerous conversations. We were trying to help residents on a one-off because we didn't have enough, um, damage. And to declare a disaster doesn't, I, I want to be clear about this because I put it out on social media. I think we were telling residents as they were calling, it doesn't help individual residents specifically. It helps the township in that it allows us to avoid bidding requirements or things like that to put stuff out to bid. But we were helping residents who called us. I had a couple who called me who needed help with a dumpster by directing them specifically to county hauling. Um, and we tried to put that out on our website and on social media to let people know, if you need help, call us. Call the township building and we will help you with whatever you need. But there wasn't, I don't want to say there wasn't a need, but there wasn't, w- we weren't in a situation here in Cecil where we needed to order large-scale dumpsters. Now, your neighbor or whoever put out the mattress, if you get me their address, we can make sure the county hauling takes it. And that's what we were doing to help people. We helped pe- a resident in Lawrence who had significant flooding. She needed help getting her gas back on. We worked with, um, State Rep Jason Ortiz's office to get them out that day. It was just on a one-off, but we can't help if you don't let us know what you need, if that makes sense. Not you personally.
Clarify something, though. Yeah, ob- obviously if they had more, considered more serious flooding, that's not to minimize you, the flooding you or your neighbor experienced, it could have been the most serious one you've ever had. But on a township-wide or, you know, Safet's township-wide, they were, they probably qualified, uh, through what they were doing with Allegheny County. So like I said, our overall, it wasn't as bad as they were, maybe Oakdale had.
No, I understand what you're saying. I was just trying to understand, what is that, um, catalyst? What's the qualifying event to go from where we are to, to a little bit better, maybe? You know what I'm saying? To, uh, push the envelope to get some, um, preventative for the future, um, maintenance on the creek banks and stuff like that.
See, we weren't up on that either. Like, as Dawn talked about, that SBA loan, um, A- A- Allegheny County, uh, had worked that out with the state and then they were, uh, uh, allowed us to, uh, join onto it. But, you know, until this happened, we didn't know anything about it. And again, as he said, it's a loan, but, but the most we can do is put that out, that there is some, you know, assistance out there, but it's...
And keep in mind, too, like, Washington County didn't even declare a state of emergency. Allegheny County did, but Washington County didn't. Again, if there's something we can help you with or help your, specifically help your neighbor with or anyone who needs help from that, just let us know and we'll do everything we can. We just weren't at the point where we could declare an emergency across the entire township at that point.
All right. Thank you.
For allowing me to ask that question. And I'll forward that information on to my neighbor.
Yeah, I mean, just call the township. Teresa at our front desk has a direct line to county hauling and she'll, she'll get them help. Thank you.
Anybody else have any general comments?
See if this works. Okay, Suzanne Murra, M-U-R-A. I live at eighteen ninety-one Rising Road. My question is about the truck traffic to the Schultz well. Um, what, what seems to be going back and forth now are like, I'll call them tank cars. I guess they have wastewater.
Flowback water.
Flowback, yes. Um, are, are those trucks like small enough to go around and through that underpass? Can, can no trucks go, uh, around? They all have to go on Rising Road?
We have begged. We have begged and pleaded with that, with Range to change their truck route. Um, I have a video yesterday. I had my fifteen-year-old in the car and I had him video because they were literally driving on the left side of the road, um, and I sent it to Range. So the right, I, I don't, I mean, other than to tell you to reach out to Range, we've repeatedly told them that Rising is not the most, the best route for them to take. And, but they're coming off the turnpike and that's how they're choosing to go. And because it's a state road, we can't tell them not to use it.
Okay, so they could go through that underpass. It's because they're not really over, over wide or whatever the proper term would be. And what, what's the hours of operation? I know the fracking was supposed to be twenty-four, seven, whatever. Like, is there a...
Range is taking that, Range is taking the position that they can work twenty-four, seven.
Okay, so those trucks can be overnight also?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Anybody else?
AC Roland, fifty-two Sycamore Street. I wanted to thank Bill and all of his hard work for getting some of the signs out. I know you guys got flooded and busy, but I definitely wanted to give you guys kudos for helping get those signs out. And just to let you know, because several of the Musians asked me to, which I talked to you earlier about, about the one-way signs, that there's some confusion. And over on the other side of, uh, of, uh, Cherry Way, I think that that's the other alley. And Frank would have to help me what the other alley is over there on the other side. But they, there's some confusion about the signage. So, which we kind of touched base with. So it may be like you did down on Birch Way where you put one on one end, one on the other. But there's, uh, confusion even on the speed limit. There apparently is two different signs. And then the one-way sign, the street has a one-way sign on Locust, I believe, but it only starts halfway. But there's none when you come around and pull onto Locust. I don't, Frank, what's that little side, you know, like if you, if you go down past the church and then you turn onto the back little road up against the, the trees where all the, the trees and everything are all the way on the other side and then it swoops around to Locust, that, that area right there has no signage that it's a one-way. And so they were requesting some signage there since the street is a one-way. But I guess they're having Amazon trucks or whoever come through and, and trying to turn that little triangle and go the other way back around.
Well, that's...
Yeah, so if you go to the other side, you have the church side, right? Um, I guess if you stayed on the road there that's the church, like, you know, if you turn at the little bridge by the little red house and the house that has the Tyvek still on it, you take that, that road that goes all the way around and it loops around.
That's the alley behind Maple Street.
Yeah.
That's the alley up in behind.
Yeah.
That's a two-way street. That's not a one-way street.
Well, it's got one-way down the sh- not, not on the Maple, but when it turns back on Locust, they've got signage and arrows that say that that's a one-way street over there. And so when you get to the triangle, kind of where Lisa Ross Fosco Asenhire lives, you know, that little triangle, Frank?
Yes.
So that whole section there is marked one-way and has an arrow. And it has a one-way coming up, you know, like where we mow and stuff on the backside of the church. So that whole road there is one-way, but when you turn onto it, I guess trucks are turning and going the wrong way down that last section that goes up against, I guess that's Maple then, right? The where, so they're going the wrong way there. And so they asked, when you come out to do, could you bring another arrow or one-way sign for, so that when they turn, you know, it's, it's obvious. I mean, I know signs aren't going to stop them because you graciously came and did a one-way for Sycamore and I still have two, two truck drivers that were arguing, well, that's where my GPS is. I'm like, sir, you're the driver. You're passing a sign that says do not enter one-way, you know?
Bill, could you stop up there and just check it out to see if you can pin that down on those? Uh, if there's some signs missing that should be one-way?
Why?
Thank you.
Can I ask, why did the timer go off? There's no three-minute limit to...
Yeah, we have, we set the three...
It's okay. It's because it's me. So, but Bill, I just wanted to thank you very much.
I'll look into it.
For that. So, and anytime you want to come out, because I know you're busy.
I'll follow up.
All are out. I'm down.
Darlene, did you time everyone?
No, just me.
Yes, whenever, but when you're talking and you're, you're going on, I stop it. It's just when the residents are speaking.
Mr. Chairman, I would ask that somebody other than Darlene be responsible for the time.
Now, we're going to deal with that later. Is there anybody else that wants to, uh, comments? Going once, going twice. Uh, Carol for motion for adjournment?
Supervisor Dizio?
Yes.
Supervisor Barney?
Yes.
Supervisor Fisher? Supervisor Shafoni?
Yeah.
Supervisor Cassiola?
Aye, the motion carries. We're adjourned.